Let's go. Good afternoon, I call for order, the City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty four, the time is two oh two P M. We are in the Ocean Shore Library, Point Brown Avenue. Roll call, Commissioner Warren here, Commissioner Barr.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace.
Here.
Alright, and so Tom sent me a note that said he had a medical appointment and he couldn't be here today. So do I have a move to excuse Tom?
Motion.
Send it, all in favor?
Alright.
Good. And I noticed that maybe she must have talked to Sarah because Larry isn't even on the agenda for roll call.
I noticed that.
So Larry must have told her something different as far as the fact of it.
Yes.
So if you didn't know, unfortunately Larry has medical, again, medical, family medical issue that's forced him and his wife to move back to California, I think. So they won't be here today. Alrighty, so do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Move by Mark, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission meeting on February seventh, twenty twenty four? Motion moved, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Wow, alright, so before we go to public comments, I won't forget. It's great to be back, you know, it's been raining nonstop in the end. I didn't see rain at all for four weeks. It stopped snowing rain there and then I hit the cord and it's been raining nonstop. So it's a little bit of an adjustment to get back to all of that. Larry just had to resign, also, as I said, from about the family issue, no fear, and Tom said he had a last minute, something couple of minutes, I won't be here. I won't be here next week, which is gonna create a problem if Tom's not here, so Mark and I will have a discussion. I'm sure everybody can be here. In general, what we have traditionally done is not take votes on major issues when we're down with more people. We'll have discussions, we'll talk, there's some minor issues we can take, take, make a decision on. But on the major stuff, probably not unless we get more people, so we'll see from there. Well, before we start, public comments, are there any public comments in the room?
I was just wondering, do you know if you have any applications in for planning?
No application right now, I don't work.
And so you're down two, correct?
Oh, true, correct, no, it's three, two.
Okay.
Is the bike clock set on the nineteen?
Yes, we're doing that a week from today, in the evening.
Right. On the nineteen. Here?
Yeah, in here, and that one is gonna be sort of just going through what the voting came out, so everybody's aware of it. And then talking about them, not looking for new projects, and then looking for some sort of people to, uh, control if they want to help, help flesh out some of these and get these projects programmed. So that's, that's a week from today, in the evening. Yes, Mark and I will be here, I think the mayor's gonna be, or he said we will, maybe I'll see him tonight. Anything else in the room? May I add anything before we get started?
Hi, Vita Pierre has no comment, thanks Gary.
Thank you, alright, new business. No real change on purpose, I'll get to the page, for those who do that, keep along. Oh, I got out of order here. I got out of order, that's alright, no purpose is on. Oh, that went off. So we're on, anything?
Purpose is fourteen?
Fourteen, yeah, no change at all in this. Fifteen, the challenges we have not changed, I look at these, well, this, doing this makes me look at them every two weeks to see. Sixteen, there's no major changes other than trying to, we've sort of added the Gateway District, that's on page seventeen. And then we've added officially Resort, Tourist, Commercial, Retail, Private, Recreation, Public, National, and Open Space. If we go to page eighteen, it reflects the elimination of six B and six C, the addition of the Gateway Corridor, and then it talks about in B two, no new residential to your neck or an act, and I just send that. I look at the B three tourist commercial, and we'll look at that some again today, which actually is pretty good. It should never had a spot on the map, and so it's been in the code for a long time, we just, it's never been put on the map, really. So the only thing we added to the existing language so far is transit rental, it's a capability in there. Alright.
Excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Earlier, B, under, regarding page eighteen, paragraph twelve, I guess it is, in the revision earlier back here, it doesn't say, it, it doesn't eliminate residential.
And, yeah, it is, I should add that, as what we said here is no new residential.
Alright, so is this, okay, their draft page eleven?
Right.
It's a prohibition of, uh, the transit rental with success.
Yeah, so. No, so on, I didn't really get that. We did say on that, we're gonna talk about that today, these are just sort of looking forward, and we really haven't heard through B one, B two.
Bring it up later.
Yeah, I won't, and I wanna go through that in detail today, as much as I have energy for. So, back to, page five, probably, which is unimplemented, I have not sent this in yet, and I will send it in. And again, really, this would just seem, as much as the currency, but people all sort of decided and passed, you know, it'll pass. But what we didn't ever do was, in some of the cases, propose revised code. So what we've done in this case is in, in the attachment to the transmittal letter, propose some code. So I'm gonna walk through the first one, which is P Z, which is the six hundred fifty square foot.
Right.
Which I think is worth getting to earlier than later, not waiting for the big regional. So page eight, was six hundred fifty square foot, or get rid of that whole table. And then E was a more than one-story building, should have a minimum square floor, the main structure of six hundred fifty square foot. That basically is prevent three hundred fifty square foot footprint, two-story, tall skinny. But what this does allow, which hasn't been allowed in the past, it may be of benefit, is you to do a six hundred fifty square foot garage storage area on the first floor, and then the main living area, six hundred fifty square foot bottom, which may be a attractive option for a lot of folks. In the past, that's been an issue, because you can't just build a garage on a residential model of choice, which is interesting. And I thought you run into some castle, a people tried to do that. They basically have to build a living structure, then they found out that living structure might have to be eight hundred square feet or a thousand square feet, when all they really wanted was a garage. So this allows you to have what we believe is a reasonable garage, with six hundred fifty on the square foot of the first floor, and then at least six hundred fifty square foot of living space on the second floor. So that all makes sense, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think it's, again, opening up options with things that in the past have not been able to do. So six hundred fifty square feet it is, and I'm comfortable, since I've been through this. We also talk about, residential zone for the unpermitted accessory structures under forty percent, that's all I'll talk about. Transit rentals. Larry had brought up, it's on page eleven, that it may be confusing that you can't occupy a house, so we struck occupy. So we basically said use operate rental, lease or a garden, or negotiate till we sent dwelling in for transit rental. So, and this is all a little language, this was, do you remember when the last transit rental code was writing, was that the nineties, right?
Yeah, it's that, yeah.
Yeah, it was a long time ago this all went in here.
Well, they've been revised since they did the conditional use.
Yeah, so in nineteen eighty nine, basically the money was all done, if you look at it, so basically, if you had a transit rental in nineteen eighty nine, your grandfather for a period of so many years. I mean, we could talk to city staff about deleting all of this stuff about grandfather in nineteen eighty nine, but you know, are there any people that are still carrying their grandfather from nineteen eighty nine?
I don't know, I don't think the city keeps track of it.
I don't either.
But there might be something out there, they certainly can't do it brand new.
Right.
I would also suggest that where, before you have offer, or negotiate, the police chief liked the term advertise.
Okay, so we wanna add advertise?
Yeah, which is kind of like offer, but not exactly.
Yeah, I got it.
It gives it more leeway, too.
Yeah, absolutely will. And that's the people that, that, if it is time to look at the RE open stuff.
Yeah.
Alright, we can add advertise, and that's right, we had talked about that, we actually agreed to it, added previously. Everything else was just a concept, like the one we did a long time ago. There's really no, nothing we would hear, this is relatively ours. The point being is, is we've had a lot more transit rentals than we had two years ago, not a lot more, but we've got more. And there's more coming, so it's worth putting this back in front of council as the opportunity to regulate transit rentals. Because I presented all this, and really what happened was, at the time, we were gonna hope staff had time to write the code, and it never happened, because things like emergency burns and the review of ride correction and all that stuff, they're come up, so. Go ahead.
Two, two things we don't do, we don't, the commonly used term in state laws, S T R, short-term rents. Short-term rents, but we don't have that term anymore, it doesn't matter. But the other thing is, we don't really define what sort of structure that is. And it probably doesn't matter twice in this particular section, but it will matter, it will be described, it will be discussed where, where you can have them, and what they, what they are to be, if we ban residential residences in the only areas that allow short-term rentals, what is it exactly? What is the structure, is it a house?
And what we've looked at, and most of the common definitions are residential properties, is what you see, and so they're not really clear. Basically, it says dwellings used for short-term rental.
Yeah, what if, uh, I apply, I've got a B two, let's say, and I apply to get a dwelling in that area, and so I can't do that. Well, it's gonna be short-term rental. Oh, okay, now what?
Well, you, basically, what we're talking about, and that's what we need to talk about, because you're right, you bring up a great point.
We'll go to a house.
So it's, we're saying no new.
Well, what if like they said, live in six weeks later, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what, and it's a sort of what we were looking at as we go through the B one, B two, and B three. We show our tourists that it'd be lesser an issue, because like it seemed the more appropriate down there, we don't ban residential in there. Uh, we don't, we don't suggest getting rid of residential, but when we look at the hard, look at hard at the wording, what we're gonna do in B one, in the gateway. You know, maybe we say things like multi-family residential.
Well, the gateway, I don't have any concern about it, because it's not a great place to build a house, maybe, but.
Right.
Maybe downtown it is, I don't know.
Yeah. And I've got them apps today, too, so I mean, this is something to discuss. But other than that, we sort of, again, we don't need to vote on this, we sort of have consensus whether it is okay to send the mayor on this, because we've already voted on all.
Yes.
I just want to get consensus and get this back in front of city staff, because I think both of these issues are worth getting worked on ahead of the redoing Title Seventeen, that's sort of what we had talked about. This was all cause for someone asked me to go look at everything we had sent in.
I did, I thought, it's okay.
Well, no, it's good, because I went back and looked at that, those are all unacted on, and some of these have actually been presented to council, and nothing had happened. So this is a good reminder to get a look at that. But we've heard nothing on memory instructions, so we're standing by on that. And Marshall's been here, and I'll talk to the later on, the mayor. So there have been several letters written. One particular homeowner has taken exceptions with seventeen fifty and roof, or they said they can't use acrylic for patio coverage as they look at their architectural standards. There's been a lot of discussion about, um, acrylic, and seventeen fifty's not in here, but it's not. And so basically what's happening is the building official using seventeen fifty to say, we have to use one of seventeen fifty approved for all rooms, including patio covers. And so we'll, we'll probably take a look at that and say, is there a way, but we can't, we have to work with the building official on how he would want it, words and such that would only apply, and then the answer would really is non-living space. You can allow the non-approved coverings in non-living.
What about things like greenhouses, a greenhouse is attached to a house?
Yeah, that would, legally, you couldn't do it right now, because we don't differentiate, that you must have the approved root in, over living spaces only. But commonly, porch is our counter, they're excluded, and the people wanted to, the, eight months ago, wanted to cover the porch with, you know, the standard acrylic, or even acrylic, you see everywhere. They were told it's not approved material. So, but that, and it came to Marshall, then it, there was a letter written to all the city council, the mayor, and me. But nobody's kicked it back to us, if I get a chance, I'll try to meet with the mayor in the next week and a half, I'll definitely want to do that one, too. So, alright. Gateway District. An entire new district, didn't exist, I basically, and we looked at the briefing last week. I basically took the B one and modified it based on everything we had talked about many times. And the only thing we did since then is struck home of services, kind of took a, and we'll see how that goes. You'll notice the Gateway District is actually shorter than B one, because we took out some of the conditional uses and home of services and some other stuff. I'll talk to mayor and staff, but there's a chance if we're all okay with these changes, we would have to vote on this, and then I can transmit this, because I know there's lots of discussion about downtown development and all this sort of stuff. And this could sort of go forward, as we've always talked about, as sort of an interim step, somebody coming up with a more comprehensive downtown development. But this is so tied up in sidewalks, downtown revitalization, and I don't think, I don't know that, that the mayor and council have sat down and even defined what they consider downtown area, like we have. There's been lots of talk about what they want to do, that a permission with U D O P for one of their community things to do some work on it, to come up with a revitalization plan and a sidewalk plan. But our definition is a little more different than, uh, I think as far as extent than theirs. Uh, because we basically did Ocean Shore Boulevard, Point Brown, Chancellor Mark, up to the post, I'm not so much sure they were thinking it that much. But we look, sort of, at what's existing B one, what needs to be redefined. So is there any discussion, or hope we've got, because this, again, is really old business.
Yeah, I, I think we should consider, when we have, when our people vote and send it on, send it on, because it won't, it'll help in their discussion, I think, to get a little different perspective than where they're thinking at the moment. So I, I would like to see it moved on, so it's in front of them.
And this all came from the previous mayor wanting to clean up, as opposed to do some major rezone. Because it does things like, I'm looking across the street at some of that trash, it gives us some ability, and then the guy across the ocean porch has been my pet peeve since he bought that place. You know, that's just, you know, beautiful retail spot that's in construction's origin, right? So I think this allows me to do a little bit more of that sort of general cleanup, without doing the really hard things. But I also think that when they go to do the really hard things, they're gonna have the hard discussions about residential, no residential. They're gonna have to have a long discussion, and this may require some sort of a study section or something about, what they did in the submitted, the B one must have applied to the B two, to this area as well. What do you do about hotels that are transitioning to long-term rentals?
I think it's a really good starting point, but I could really see it over time changing, because kind of if you look at where we're at now, we've got Point Brown, which is really almost a business district, and you've got Ocean Shore's Boulevard, which is really more tourist, but in the middle of that are all kinds of things that kind of belong on the other side. You've got an eye doctor place on Ocean Shore's Boulevard, and really, it probably belongs on Point Brown. So I could see over time, maybe getting those two districts really cleaned up to be purposeful for probably really our being used today, I could see that happening. But I think this is a good starting point to help us move in that direction. And like you said, Gary, it really was about cleanup when we talked about it and voted on it the first time.
And the one thing that I noticed we don't have in here, and it's okay, we don't specifically say transit rentals are permitted use. And I looked at this, believe it or not, late one night at a house, because the way we do transit rentals in the current code is you can't do them in residential area, so by, for making implication, you could do them in the Gateway District. I mean, we're gonna change all that, and I don't think we want to change it and specifically call it out as a permitted use, I don't do any thought on that, maybe when we go back and rewrite all the code we do.
I, I think as long as the mayor and the council understand that this is a starting point to get to the hard stuff that I know have to happen. And there probably will have to be a study and everything else involved in it, because it will probably be a change over time for our community and how we look at it. Um, but I, I think it's a good starting point, I would agree.
I agree, I, I have the saying that I use a lot, if it was easy, it'd already be done.
Yeah.
When they're difficult, it takes a while, and this is gonna be one to, it's start, certainly not finish.
Logically, or any thoughts on some of the subjects?
Oh, I know that, I just noticed two new apartments, structures, one on, one, one just one on the market, but one's been available for some, but they're both motels. So they've been converted to long-term rentals.
Which one, this one here?
This one and the Discovery Inn, that way the rain, uh, been renovated.
Oh, the Discovery Inn is on the market?
Yeah, it's been renovated, and now it's apartments, which we desperately need, of course, but, uh, that's, they won't be the first. And they certainly won't be the last.
And this doesn't address this, and I really think we need to have a discussion about, you know, what in the long term does this city see going forward, and the citizen involvement was a very difficult question. Because you've got Sands now, you've got this guy here, that used to be Time Shadow, I mean, the wind song, or wind something.
Yeah, I forget what to call him, but yeah.
Changed name so many times. And you've got those two, and there's one across the street, up by, uh, the, 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 the small one.
Yeah, that's, that's actually an apartment there, but it isn't, it isn't multi-family, it's only, it's commercial, so.
Yeah, it's a commercial zone, so, I mean, downtown corner is a little different, I think, than the interior of Russell B one, to talk about it. But other than that, do you think this is good enough to get started?
I suppose, I, I, then, of course, we'll have the people who, if we're only talking about the Gateway Corridor, and I presume we are.
Yeah, that's the Gateway Corridor case.
I, I guess it's fine, but we are gonna have those motel conversions going on as time goes on. And the only ones I don't see going to that, probably is Shiloh, and Bayview, or elsewhere.
Maybe the Lighthouse, yeah, those are.
Well, I think, too, the conversions, to me, that just speaks to a whole city in decline, right? If we had a tourism, if we had a setup, you wouldn't be seeing that. So I'm hopeful, maybe too optimistic, that if we have a decent study done, it's what's gonna help the city to know how do we get more tourism, how do we keep it here, what do we do? Maybe that's Pollyanna.
No, it isn't, but my own thought, because this is where we have these sort of discussions, maybe, gosh, say it, is that people in the current market prefer transit rentals as opposed to staying in a hotel.
Yeah.
And it may be that hotels aren't, because I know, because we don't manage transit rentals in this town, we don't know how many transit rentals, what the growth of transit rentals and the impact on the hotel, hotel market is.
Well, we can't count their licenses.
Yeah, it's not everybody's licensed.
And that one's a, that's the thing is, we, we will always have obsolescent motels being converted to apartments, any city has that, irrespective of a decline or not. People just expect more in motels, frankly.
And what I discovered talking to some businesspeople and developers in towns, one of the problems, that's why we don't have any nationals, is if you have a national franchise, you're required to do a major rebuild at a certain age, like Days End Cooper. That's why a lot of these ones, like the Best Western isn't a Best Western anymore, because they couldn't afford to do the six-year refresh. So they covered in the franchise and then it became the Lighthouse, that's what's happened to many in town, I guess. I think the market simply isn't supporting those hotels, and so like your point is, this is probably a symptom of a shift in the tourism market and/or a decline in the tourism market, but we're seeing visitor numbers somewhere, which is interesting to me. You know, we're seeing cart counts well over what we've ever seen, but yet our motels are pale, so I don't have an answer.
Well, I think it's, it's mostly, motels in the big city are, have far higher occupancy rates than we do. If you have a motel around Sea Town, you'll never go wrong.
Oh, no.
Or even in downtown sales, they're always subscribed here, it's gonna be forty percent year round, which is the way it is. And some owners are not willing to renovate a new one, an old one, because it isn't worth the trouble, but they can make tons of money, a lot less work on them, month to month. I think it's just the way it is.
And so this discussion the city needs to have about what to do, because they're renting these less than the other rentals on the market. Those month to month and all, because it's not as nice.
I mean, the thread, okay, up here was closed for two years.
Yeah, sweetheart, it's brand new.
Yeah.
And there's a supply and demand issue going on here, right? People need housing, and there isn't that much housing being built.
Right.
But there is existing structures
Yeah.
that can be converted into housing, if you will.
And there is just not that much rental housing.
There is.
And one of the solutions to that is, for my seven-week vacation, A D Us. Graduating our A D U law, so we'll, we'll talk about that here, because that's one thing I learned in my discovery the last eight weeks. And I'll say it right now, as we talk about it, is, you know, Point Brown White House is so different, why it has so many different advantages, one is the common seat. So that's how it gets a, a whole, that's how it gets a hospital, little emergency room. It's kind of like you take one, all the ones here, all them have it in one spot, so it's the common seat. Two of them is, it's extremely dependent and accepting and working with, it's reliant on tourist industry. It has a ski area, we have the beach, but in the summer, it has a huge tourist, and it attracts a different type of tourists. Because there is forty-five arcades and towers in a town the size of, smaller than us. But the difference is, people come from Dallas, Fort Worth, expecting this bay, spend ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars on paper. Nobody comes to Ocean Shore's to do that.
Yet.
Yet. But to, to support, uh, forty-five towers, I forget the number, and the fifteen wonderful restaurants, what they've got is what we would consider an extremely liberal rental policy in residential neighborhoods. A lot of the houses have been subdivided into two apartments, because there's a Because there's a large population, I talk to them on the lips, uh, the people that work on the ski lifts, you know, the lifties. And then they, they push tables in a, in a restaurant. And then in the summer, they're the fishing guy or rafting guy. And they have the ability to work year round, but they hustle year round. But the difference is they can afford to live because of the more lenient, uh, residential rental policy. Cause there's no apartment, there's like two or three apartment homes, less than we have. It's all people that have taken homes, and we met several, several people that own seven or eight or nine homes. And they're just, they've subdivided them, or haven't subdivided them, or are renting them. So to support that population who's working in the restaurants, working at the ski resort, working there. The city has realized that they were regulated rental agency, and they've got a fairly aggressive, um, short-term rental management. Want that to compete with the long-term rental market for the workers. Then it's districted and then it's zoned, there's areas where you can do short-term and there's areas where you can't. You know, if you're more than half a mile from the plaza, you pretty much can't do a short-term rental. But the difference I saw from the planning staff, and I did talk to the city planner, she hadn't been there long enough. She said, I just was all here when I got here, I don't know how we got all those, everything else. But we talked length of, that's what, one thing she did say is, the city really works to keep the opportunity for the businesses to hire workers. By, um, not prohibiting, well, by allowing a lot more rentals and what we would consider one and two family homes.
Places like Vale and Aston, they haven't figured that out yet. They don't even have people living in the same county working.
No, they, and they, and they don't have a land, but towns have been there forever. And, you know, there's a lot of these old homes that just get subdivided and get put out. And the other thing is it's a year round, and these, these people know how to do it, and the winter they work on the mountains, and hundreds and hundreds of them. And they buckle, wait on tables for three nights a week, and then they, and they'll start where they do all their stuff. We don't quite have that year-round capability. And so there's a whole group of very outdoorsy people that want to live there and work there, but can't work fine. And I had discussions with them on the left or at the brewery or whatever they need to buy, speak of those. That's what my little green soldier, I'm gonna get to this issue of. As a city, as a planning commissioner, we understand the lack of rentals is constraining the city in many ways, right? And as a planning commissioner, we're always trying to figure out how to fix that. You know, we're looking at, I think everything we've done has made a real focus on, um. I don't know what, what, what we call it, the, the middle housing issue, allowing small houses, small lots of work and all that. So I'm not sure how much we've worked and what we can do on the rental, but I think we need to transmit that as a continued issue. And I'm gonna maybe make that a challenge or figure out a way to write that up and bring it up again. That, and you bring this up in this whole discussion going, that's why I wanted to talk about it is, uh, affordable rentals.
Well, the state gave us a warning about a year ago regarding, uh, ADUs.
Uh, while we're on that.
And the city did nothing about.
I understand.
It wasn't our responsibility, it was the statute. I don't even think they looked at it, and consequently, nobody knows about it. We could do an ADU and, we already had, already had the ADU rules in place, except for the ways occupied, which the state superseded us. But still nobody knows about it.
Right, and if you're not aware, what happened basically is the city, the state or some citizens group in response. Said that our ADUs statute, we haven't got there yet, it violates what the state code. Because it restricts occupation of ADUs for family members and caregivers. Which kind of goes against anything affordable housing that the state of Washington has tried to do, but that is an option to open. All right, so this, are we ready to take a vote on extending this as it's? Do we have a motion to send it?
Make a motion that we send it on for council.
Consideration, is it?
My side.
All in favor? Yeah, good, so I can send that. And now the hard one. Page twenty-two, B one. You know, I, I read this and read this and looked at this and said, what would I change? And it really comes down to. And this gets to your point, of one family, two family, and multi-family values. The first three sentences of paragraph eight, um, what we said in the, in the Gateway was no new residential. And here, and what's left, cause most of us know it, but this group, nobody to look at it, is the, uh. Do we say anything about single family in the, in the, let's call the residual B one, actually Gateway District, carries it out. Uh, the, to your point, Thor, is. Can we say something like, single family has a transit rental home?
Well. It, it, it leaves, it leaves a situation ripe for abuse, let's say. I have a transit rental, but there I am, living it, who's gonna know? And the only, from what Marshall says. The difference between a motel and apartment is parking spaces, and that's why when they convert, he has to approve it. For the transit rental, you really don't, so how do you, who's gonna know it, how do you, what's gonna happen? For a down, for, for a transit rental downfall residence, I guess, is what you'd say. So how do you? How do you? If our aim is to eliminate transit rentals, then this way to do it, but I, I don't know what. Cause we don't really have a successful, um, interpretation of it. We basically allow it by omission rather than, rather than by a specific rule. I, I don't know what to do about it.
I mean, and taking transit rental out of it, I'm almost of a mind to have a discussion about saying, maybe. In the B one, we can roll it out if we want to, we should say multi-family only. Which sort of?
Gateway or?
No, well, Gateway's different. Gateway said no new residential, period. This would be, you can only do residential if it's a multi-family.
Our garage is out, and under this, our garage is out, we just crossed out this.
I took it out because that's what we were talking about.
Oh, yeah, but we allow houses.
Yeah, that's why we need to clean it up, I have to clean it up by. I took that out when I thought we might take out single and two families and make it multi-family only. And we haven't really talked about, this is the first time we've talked about this at all.
The other thing, from a realistic point of view, these lots are quite small and don't lend themselves to much business activity, unfortunately. They're the same size as residential lot. And so a lot of these people, when they bought them some time ago, they would say, oh, I don't really care about the business, but I would like to live there. So now what do we do and how do we deal with them? We don't really, i- if you want to build a building for a business, you better have a business to go in it, or else it's just a waste of money. And now we deprive somebody of the right to use their land as they originally expected. Not to say that zoning shouldn't from time to time change, but on the other hand, are these practical for business or not? Certainly the B two lots are no bigger, especially down by the Marina. And we don't have any B two lots up here except around, what was it? The one behind Arrow Harbor, yeah, that's it, that's, nobody's gonna build a house there, no matter what the heck we, we say, so. But we, we, we tend to deprive those people who say like, I don't wanna build a business, I don't wanna run a business, I got no demand for business. But all they can use by lots to build a empty business on the first floor and live upstairs, and nobody wants that, so. What kind of lot first down on that thing? Probably not down here so much.
No.
Like down south, yeah.
And we, is it worth, we're only helping out the map and looking at what we were on called residual B one, because Thor knows bad lots, or it doesn't give you that. They don't look bad. And what that, yeah. Now, that's a good point, you know, residual units is always a possibility. So really, B one is just really different, really. Yeah, what we've done is made, this is residual B one, basically, is everything around it is gateway corridor.
At one time, this would be two.
So it'll be one now. This is B one, and we talked about making that straight commercial.
Right.
This is a famous lot, B one. He thinks he has a special provision, and he doesn't. This is the B two you were talking about. Yeah. And believe it or not. Oh, looking at these bodies. So, okay, so that is Seaboard, that's what, that's what.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all B two, that's what they enjoy. But you've got these little weird ones like this.
Yeah.
B one.
That's a city one, there.
No.
Is that where they?
Well, it's a mixture of everything, it's right across the street from us, right up. Okay, so that's now Gateway, that's now Gateway.
I'm sorry, no, I was thinking of this one.
Yeah, that's city one.
Yeah.
That's all Gateway, but down here, Thor, what we had talked about was making all of this, um. Well, um, we're making this residential mix. That's what?
This is all homes.
Yeah, so we're talking about making this residential medium mix, so you could do transit rental and homes here. We had talked about that in here.
Right.
This is another district.
Eight lots in here that are.
Yeah.
And some of the other ones, especially like along here, are too small to do anything about a house. Or maybe.
That's B two. So, are you, are you, did you want a B two?
Yeah.
Your house?
Yeah.
The one you live in?
No, I'm up here.
That's what I'm saying.
These are both in that district, yeah, so, I think that's what they are.
So the point you're bringing up is if we say no single families, then we've gotta really look at reclassifying all of this.
Yes, but you do, easiest thing Russell does is to ask the owners, what do you guys think? And if they don't care, then we do it. Especially if there's only eight lots.
Right.
It's easy to communicate with those. And you probably get all of them still, and they're able to be effective.
Yeah.
Most of those are. Businesses, all sorts of stuff.
Well, that would be proactive in my mind, to ask them rather than make a decision and get the feedback.
And we can share with someone, hey, we probably can't.
Think of us till we blue in the face.
So, yeah, I'm just, again, looking at what we've done here. Residential high mixed residential, alright, residential median. And this is the, with R M, and this is all rezoned, so these B two are all these. This, I think, this we've sort of figured out, mixed use in here.
Yeah.
And then this is, I think, high mixed use.
High mixed, you're right.
Over here, this is medium mixed use. Now, here, we said residential medium, but not mixed, we're gonna have to rethink that.
Who's in that, was it B, B?
No, it's R, R.
There's all houses there.
Yeah, so that's why we said R M, you know, single apartment.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Oh, the building, where's that one they just built right here?
One of these tracks, I guess it's a duplex, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, well, it's, I think, the one transit, but no, I can't, yeah, if it's in here, it's transit.
Yeah, I think it is. Yeah, I think it's, it's in some corner.
And this, we've talked about. Medium density with over in here, and we're all talking about a life of fear, and this will be two, I think.
Yeah.
This one, we know who owns it, but I would be tempted to make it the same as the, so maybe resort tourist.
Yeah, that could be a good one.
Looks, and that's dry, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe resort tourists.
That makes sense. Wouldn't, wouldn't hurt these. Well, so that's, that makes it odd, if you're, if you're gonna designate it as resort tourist, maybe, maybe.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Man, those plans were beautiful for that Marina and stuff. I saw it when I was getting.
Yeah.
When I first started getting the permitting stuff.
Yeah, the idea back then was great, so.
Yeah.
So the answer is, is we probably don't wanna touch B one, a prohibition of single family until, A, we talk to, really just need some study session. With all of these discussions.
It's so confusing, you said, what if it looks like a house, it is a house, or is it, I don't know, I better ask.
Well, I think it's pretty simple, really, what, what we're doing with the code is saying dwelling, it's a bit of dwelling, but that is, you're. And then it's something that area and you make it pretty large.
What we're doing is getting, using these creative solutions to, uh, expand the loan, like we did down there. The bridge of sixteen, where they had connected their foundations.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's crazy, that's, when we said the Commonwealth subdivision of four different houses that are well apart, and you said Commonwealth.
We get people that are very creative, sometimes.
The one thing we did talk about along with page twenty-three, since we haven't talked about, is we did talk about in these areas. Saying real house and Commonwealth residential is probably not appropriate in those areas, because.
That's the limitation, yeah.
Yeah, so it's real house and Commonwealth residential development. Once you've got that whole code on how to do it, and it's been used to get around. Where if, you know, in the areas, and again, I think it's a combination of re, taking some current B ones and making them. Medium and high-density mixed years solve some of the issues.
The term real house and Commonwealth structure came from the covenants in nineteen sixty-two. Not anything else.
And it got used extensively.
Yeah, they just, no, let's stick to that, the zoning was a cutting base job back in nineteen seventy-one.
And we, and we leave it appropriately, I believe, in the R M and the R H. Because there may be a reasonable warrant to do that in those zones, like they're doing now, the triples and the flats. We can do it, but we're also trying to, we're gonna, you have the ability for smaller structures. And, you know, some divided lots of out Commonwealth subdivision, some divided below. So really, I mean, I don't have a lot to talk about on B one today, other than those things. Um, B two, what we talked about is construction of new residential rentals should only be permitted for a period of two years. And again, this needs to go, just to the elected officials, if they have the bravery to get into it. Have a discussion about this, on what you really wanna do. And I really think with the current mayor and council, if he continues to want to have these discussions and/or a study session. I mean, cause we've already mentioned, I know, uh, council member Wills wants like a study session of just the zoning in general. It almost needs a special one on B one, B two in the gateway. Um, so it may be more than one, maybe a series of study sessions if they're willing to do it, so, all right.
Well, we have an objective in Gateway, regarding appearance.
Yeah, I think it's a short-term issue.
As far as the rest of it, I don't, I don't know yet, because it's pretty much filled up with stuff already.
Yeah. The, the rest of them, there is some of the envelopes, and it ties to the recommendations we're making to take a lot of the wrong B ones by four. By Point Brown and Octopus, and converting those to R M and R H. Which solves some of the, which basically is, I don't know, call it, uh, zoning after the fact. Cause people have, people have filled the B one with residential. Might as well just zone it residential, there's nothing left to do commercial in there. So, uh, what we do wanna think about though is, um, I guess we're okay. Yeah, at some point, like you said, we may leverage commercial uses in some of those areas, or we may go back and relook. Cause I think about the electric pole guy. Who went out of this anyways, but, um, is that sort of an attractive opportunity that we would be taking out? Cause you could do it for the B one, you know, talk about Thor, yeah. So do we, still leave that open. So I don't really have anything else to go with the B two that we need to look at. I'd like to look at, um, resort tourist quickly, if you haven't. Um, it was actually, I thought it was pretty well written, it was delivered.
Yeah.
I mean, I have like commercial activities, reflect what we had done, and I added transit rentals.
Yeah.
And I really thought resort tourist had written, I tell it was written much later than the other codes. Cause somebody had a great idea once, they just didn't put it. I mean, we're gonna have to go through this, because it talks about two family, multi-family wells with minimum loss size, and that sort of stuff. But we can get rid of some of these, and take what we put for the R H and put in resort tourist, because when you look for the resort tourist, there's that polymer thrown to that, to be minimum loss sizes in the R H, and put that in the resort tourist.
Uh, because there's one, two, three, there's.
Other existing resort tourists on the west side of O'Keeffe Show Boulevard, I think three or four single family homes exist, and that's it. So, and they definitely meet any sort of minimum yard size. All right, and private recreational, nothing to look at, I mean, these are all, we're gonna carry them over.
What is allowed there?
Hmm?
What is allowed in PRs?
What?
What's allowed in B ones?
Everybody said.
We don't say.
It's private recreational?
Yeah. We, we have the closest PR zone, is that right?
I don't think we have it anywhere, and on the map.
Yeah, we do.
We have public recreation, we have private. We have no private recreational. Okay, it's hard to see on the colors.
That's PR.
That, yeah, that is private.
That's our PR here, too.
That is, okay.
And so is that.
Okay, you're right.
That one over there.
Yep.
And we don't have any, we just say we have that, but we don't say what you can do in there.
Well, it says here on page thirty-one.
It's aspirational, it looks like to me.
It is. So do you think that's something we need to clean up?
No, and nobody, I, I always thought we could rent water skis down at the jetty or something, wonderful. I mean, because it doesn't really say you can or can't. Not water skis, but fishing poles, that kind of stuff, but maybe you can, I don't know, I'm just wondering.
Okay. I mean, I think it's, some person will look at it, or at least ask, and I'm not gonna ask either. I thought, you know, by that, how that plays, by the way, you want to create a plan in private recreational, private they own?
Yeah, yeah, the lady that lives in the Commonwealth, I don't know if it. Forgot her name, uh.
And does Harpren own that piece across from this house? That private?
No, no, actually, I don't.
Okay.
Look at that.
No, it's fine, I'm just curious, it's not fun, so.
I'm curious.
But that is something that, once we get out of the residential, we'll have to figure out what to do with it. Public recreational is easy, and then open spaces are pretty simple. Um, but that's really it, we didn't do a whole lot, but that's all right, I mean, I think we got done what we really needed to do and wanted to get something to that.
Send a couple things out to city council.
Absolutely. Sitting around forever.
There you go.
But I'm almost feeling like we're at the point where the issues with B one and B two and residential are so big that we probably need
some guidance.
From property owners and elected officials. Sort of get an idea.
Because otherwise, I, I totally agree with you, otherwise we're, we're making proposals, we're thinking these lines, somebody else, some other group may have this thought, and we could just be wasting time going down paths that aren't supported by like.
I mean, all the things we brought out, so, you know, hotel, hotel provision and all that sort of stuff, I really think it'd be good to get something, but I just have to figure out how to do that. And a study session advance, if they have time.
Can we request one?
I'll, I'll talk to him, yeah, about getting one. Um, in, in the ideal and in the ideal vision, it would be, we would sort of get through the residential without much pain, sort of just an update, I think it'd be a lot of answering questions, but not a lot of controversy, at least on council with what we're doing. And then we just say, we've kind of thrown our hands up on the B one, B two, and B three, let's try to figure out which direction we're going with. Because there are people that would tell you, is, is we don't want any residential on the B one. So then we would have to sit down, and we'd make sure Thor is there, because he's the voice of all of the other issues. Well, yeah, it's because he's been here a little bit longer than me, and understands the issue, but I think that, that would be the value. And I don't think they're gonna give us an answer, because giving us, giving us an answer and.
But at least it's heard, and it's out there.
Yeah.
And we might get some consideration.
Yeah.
But if we don't have that discussion, we have no chance of getting any feedback.
It is.
Well, and some of these are just, they're such big issues, it, it may take even more than that, it may take a, a whole blue sky session, right?
Yeah.
Public involved, only, you know, a certain amount of people, but it might take something like.
Well, studies sessions allow public comment, I think.
But I do.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so it might take something like that, so that we get enough input and, and a vision for where we think the city's going.
Okay. My head hurts, every time I look at you, I always feel, my head hurts. But, again, resort tourist, I feel good about, though, I think that's really rich. The other we haven't done yet is talking about the protected commercial areas, commercial only, no residential, and picking a few spots, the one we've talked about, we know, on Ocean Boulevard, the field of I G A Sunset, current I G A complex, makes no sense in residential. And then a long talk about the one across the street from the post office, because that's a, it's a strange lot, you really wouldn't do a strictly commercial, and what there's other uses that could be in there, and you wouldn't want to do some zoning up and trade, or beneficial use of that. Right?
Yeah, that was gonna be a trade department.
Yeah, that would be.
That would be a high-end RV resort.
And a original thought, yeah.
Well, the high-end RV resort, that's what is thought away, because I'm not sure it's the market for it. So we'd have to look at.
It was defeated by drainage issues, I think.
By what?
Drainage issues.
Oh, high-end RV resort?
Almost anything, unfortunately, I mean, it needed a lot of elevation to drain better, apparently.
Yeah, probably. It's a big piece of land with nothing good to do on it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, currently, the B ones, it was wide open, so we could look at something else that's appropriate, just like, oh, we know about it, we drive on the boulevard.
Funny thing is, there appears to be quite a bunch of full-time trailer rentals, RV rentals. Maybe not here, but lots of places.
Yeah.
If you go by that place in the outside of Rochester, on the way to High Five, on the south side of the highway, that place is full.
It is.
Oh, yeah, that's everybody's casino, the important.
Yeah.
I love that one, I just talk, talk to people about that one. And there's a lot of people that live in RVs full time, yeah. And we, basically, the only place you can do it here is in six A.
Yeah.
It was not a lot, and most of those are occupied, there were vacancies. All right, anything else before we call it a day? Mark, thank you for stepping off, come on, and I think you're off next time, Harry. All righty, so, next meeting is March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, at two P M. I will not be here, because I get on an airplane in a half hour before that, and I'll have a discussion with Mark about what we want to do with that one. Maybe a short, maybe, maybe I'll be, maybe other stuff, so, all righty. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mark is moved, seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. Oh, sorry, I didn't. And I, we're not gonna vote. All righty, we're not gonna vote on the journey, we'll do it. Do we have any public comment in the room? Thank you, guys. Vida, any public comment? Oh, Vida, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm muted.
There we go.
Thank, thank you, I just want to mention, there's still language in there about hazardous waste citing facilities. Um, I don't know if you have to keep that in there because of the contract with Lemay, but it's, um, it's in the general language, I think you need to strike that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All righty, now, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
But I caught myself, I looked at.[1790.54]